I'd like then to welcome us to a session where we are looking at NGOs and the work that they are doing, the important work that they are doing. Just in as with the previous session that we've just had, we're going to divide the four NGOs that have kindly agreed to share their case study material with us into two groups of two. So I would like to ask Afrinov, Afrinov is represented, I think, here by Monica, Betty and Anna. If you all could kindly turn on your video, just so we can see who you are. And Kulturans, who I think is represented here by Fran, so we can make sure that you're ready to speak, Fran as well. And I'd just like to then say that Afrinov and Kulturans then will stay in this room and present your case study material here in this room. And what we will do is ask the Sunrise Foundation and the Centre for People Development to go into the breakout room, which I think Rosanna will now create. So before you do move, I just wondered if we could have just a one or two sentences from each of the NGOs, just to tell us who you are, so people can understand which room they'd most like to go into. So Monica, Betty, Anna, if you could just tell us what you'll be talking about and who Afrinov is, that would be great, just one or two sentences.
Thank you so much, Bruce. My name is Monica Jefkoskei and I'm here with Betty, the program officer. Afrinov is the, and also Anna Obani, who is here with us as a student on internship. Africa Centre for Nonviolence Organisation is an NGO registered here in Kenya. And in today's presentation, we want to share how we have been using arts as a nonviolence campaigning strategy for community social transformation and peace building in the communities that we are working in. We work in eight counties, which are spread across four larger regions, North Rift Region, Western Region, Nairobi Region and Nyaosa Region.
Thank you so much. So Monica and Betty and Anna will stay in this room to present on a more detailed presentation on their programming and how they use identity and art in that. Fran, if I could move to you, please, just to give us a one or two sentence breakdown.
Yeah, of course. Hello everyone. Kulturans is an NGO based in Mexico City, but we work internationally. Our approach is on how to take arts and culture as powerful tools to build cities, involving citizens and to achieve community wellbeing. So that's the snapshot.
That's wonderful, Fran, and thank you for being here right from the beginning, despite being in Mexico, an all-nighter for you. Well done. And if I could then jump to Sunrise Foundation, just to quickly give us an introduction as to what you'll be talking about, I think it's represented by Simon and Richard, I think. Robert, excuse me. Simon?
Yeah. Hello. Hi, Mr. Bruce and the team. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody. The top leadership of UNESCO, all the organisers of this workshop and the team behind this successful discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to organise all your presence. My name is Mr. Simon Mekani-Palé from South Sudan, based in Tuba. Sunrise Foundation is the national organisation that operates in South Sudan, the parts of the country as well as East African region. We will be talking about culture and cohesion of understanding among different types in South Sudan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Simon. And the Centre for People Development, represented here today by, I think, Peter is, are you here, Peter, or is some, one of the other team members here? Mary? Can't hear you, Mary, I'm afraid.
Hello.
Ah, that's better, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to attend this meeting. I'm here on behalf of Peter Otienho Hayombe for Centre for People Development. We are a CBO in, operating in Kenya, in Kisumu County. And we have various areas which we work in, but particularly for the meeting, we are going to talk about how we are using, how we are incorporating the issues that were covered in this meeting, like art, music, et cetera, to assist the teachers and in disseminating information to their pupils. So we'll talk more about it in the breakout session, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Okay, so if Rosanna, you could create a breakout room, please. And we are going to ask Sunrise Foundation and everybody interested in their work or and/or work in South Sudan, perhaps, work that they're particularly interested in refugee resettlement work and do a lot in that area. Or the Centre for People Development, as Mary has just spoken about, will be speaking about their work in Kisumu in Kenya specifically. But it's very interesting work to do with the training of kindergarten teachers. I think they'll be talking about in elders' stories, cultural heritage and art and music, as she mentioned. So if you are interested in those contexts, please do now head over to that breakout room. And Chris, how are you doing? Are you, is your audio fixed? Because we're asking you to be the moderator in that room.
Hello. I hope you can hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you, great. So Chris, you're going to head to that breakout room, please, and be the moderator. And I will stay here in this room and moderate for Afrinov and Kulturans. Everybody take a minute. Everybody take a minute. We're going to just take a couple of minutes to find our rooms. And if you need a quick comfort break, I know some of us have been sat at our computer screens for several hours, so a quick comfort break, if necessary. Please do use this time while people are finding their rooms to have a very short, if possible, break, because we'd like to get on. But we're looking forward to this next session. Anybody got any issues? Please do put them in the chat. And otherwise, we look forward to seeing you in those rooms. Simon, I can still see you're here. You need to be in the other breakout room. Anybody else that is in the wrong room? Chris, you are also still here, you need to be in the breakout room. You are the moderator, you are there. So for those of you who have any confusion, you can go to the more button at the bottom of your screen, there's a button that says more. And when you click that, it says join breakout room. You should see an option, join breakout room. And when you click that, you will see that the Centre for People in Development and Sunrise is an option and you can click join. I think we've got a good number of people that are moving over. Okay. I'll just wait another 60 seconds or so. Okay, I think we've got a a good movement of people. About 30 or so people have gone across. Rosanna, we don't see anybody in this room that should be in the other room at this point, perhaps? I think we're all good.
No, all good from my end.
Great. Okay, so it's a great pleasure to reintroduce the two NGOs that are in this room, Afrinov and Kulturans. We've been working closely with both organisations over the last year or so, maybe longer in some cases. And we've really developed a wonderful set of partnership ideas and initiatives in both cases. So I'm excited to hear from both Afrinov and Kulturans as they share with us some very interesting perspectives and approaches that they take to integrating arts and identity into their social transformation programming. So what we'll do is we'll give, if possible, 10 minutes to Afrinov first. And then we'll jump straight into 10 minutes with Kulturans. And then we'll have around about 10 minutes for Q and A at the end. If you could kindly throw your questions in as things roll on, we'll keep a good eye on those questions and funnel them back to our presenters at the end. I am going to operate on the assumption that the presenters want to share their own screens. And if we have a problem, we will try and find a file for you. But let's start with Afrinov. Very warm welcome to Monica, Betty and Anna. Over to you.
Thank you so much, Bruce. And also thank you so much all who have joined in this room so that we may be able to share and showcase some of our activities on how we have been working by integrating identity, culture, nonviolence and peace building activities. So I will be able to share a screen, my screen on, so that we make our presentation. Yes, I'm sharing, I'm here with Betty, as I said earlier, and also I'm here with Anna. We have been here with Jack, who is also the programme, who is our finance manager. And we also have Agona, who is part of us. Sorry. Are you able to see my screen?
No, I'm afraid not. Shall I share for you?
Maybe for the interest of time. Bruce, maybe you can share.
Do you want me to share? Rosanna, do we have Cormax in the other room? Is he standing by?
Cormax in the other room, standing by.
Okay.
I can try and find.
That's okay, I can, I can look as well.
There we go. Yeah, you're doing it.
It's working.
Well done.
Are you able to see now?
It's slowly coming, yes.
It's loading, I think.
It's loading, exactly. We can see it, perfect.
Thank, thank you so much. So who we are have said, this is a non-for-profit making organisation. We are registered in Kenya and we offer nonviolence trainings and campaign support to grassroots groups in Kenya. We work in eight counties in Kenya with more than 50 grassroots groups and 45 resource persons. What we do here is we carry out nonviolence programmes for peace building and more so proactive peace building approach. We also deal with good governance and responsive leadership, climate justice, economic empowerment for peace. So in today's presentation, I will be able to share about one of the powerful tools that we are using as an organisation. And this is called Turning the Tide Programme. TTT in short is a nonviolence training and campaigning programme that advocates for social justice and sustainable peace in the society. It was adopted from QPSW, this is Quakers Peace and Social Witness in Britain in 2010. And we have been able to contextualise to East African context and has resulted to growth in countries that are implementing it. Currently, it is actively implemented in Kenya, Rwanda and Burundi. It recognises the importance of identity, cultural concepts in peace building and social justice. And this one, I can call it as a strength. This TTT operates through four different pillars, which are here. The first pillar is community diagnosis. The second pillar is training and education. The third pillar is campaigning and the fourth and the last pillar is monitoring and assessing the campaigns. So what is the first pillar all about? It is a systematic process which helps us to gather information from the community before making an official entry. Here, we adopt the use of engagement methodology for identity in conflict. This is a powerful tool that was introduced to us by OICD. The essence of this is to bring out the community feelings, the existing identity concepts, identity relations, the community story at the moment. And not only ending there, but it also gives us a community desired future. It helps us to know what the community desires to look in future. After having gotten the information, what's next? Through the information, we are able to draw an identity map that shows the connecting dots, nodes of the identity concepts, that is the us and the them. These are actually the concepts that are used in identity. And this connection could be positive or negative. From there, it informs us as an organisation in developing a training agenda that will be suitable for the group need. Also, we'll be using this map to monitor the progress of change and impact of campaign activities. So this is just an example of the recently done story of which we are going to present some of the artistic activities that have done. So you can see that, I'll just depict this, how the community sees itself. So during that moment of the diagnosis, you can read that the community of Wahenga artists, this is a group in Kayole, sees itself as a group deeply rooted in the local context, intimately connected to the struggles and challenges faced by its members and neighbours. So we can be able to read the identity factors within that community then, before our entry. So these people also, apart from looking at the community that is full of struggles and challenges, they are positively looking themselves as agents that can bring social change by addressing the social injustices and advocating for human rights. And on the other side of the desired future of this community, we can see that this community looks in future, having a community where these people who are engaged in art, especially the youth, are people who are supported in the community, people who are seen not only as engaging in criminal activities, but people who are capable of even expressing themselves in a positive way. People who can tell and speak out about these issues such as gender-based violence and even how to conserve the environment. This is an example of how the identity map looks like. I will not be able to give in the details, but it helps us to know how the us and them relates. It brings out some of these clear issues in the community. You can see insecurity, unemployment, and there's so many things that happens in a community. The second pillar of the tool that we are using is all about training and education. And these are the themes that we cover during the trainings. Violence and nonviolence, power and how change happens. Where, and lastly, the campaign planning and execution. The aim of our training is to broaden participants' understanding of violence and nonviolence. Because in many cases, communities could assume they are invisible violences, but look at only the physical violence. So through the training, they are able to understand the existing structural violence and cultural violence. We also enable them by sharing the nonviolent tools, skills and strategies so that they are able to start campaigning. We are also able to bring out strongly the power and how this power is important in the process of bringing. And lastly, through the training and education, we instill courage to these people to act on injustices in their communities. This is something that is very evident that people could be just seeing an issue, but they do not have courage to act on these injustices. The last and most exciting part in this is campaign and accompanying. And this is where the community is able to identify issues, prioritise the issues, select the best strategy for action and implement. So these are the mostly used arts for peace and social justice campaign. We have graffiti, we have the talking walls, we have drama and song, storytelling, role plays and sports. Why are we using art? Through the activities that we have been able to implement, we find that art is attractive and eye-catching. And these are some of the things that you can see, it's very attractive, it's eye-catching. You are able to concentrate and even further dig out the information from what the art is expressing. Art also serves as a voice for the marginalised and concerned groups. Examples are the persons with disabilities and even those people who come from poor backgrounds. Look at these arts. It definitely keeps a voice. What are the people telling? What are these people speaking out? So you can easily pick out information from this. It's also an alternative strategy when verbal communication reaches its limits. At some point, we are limited in communicating verbally. But when we are able to express using art, then we are able to tell our story and even air our grievances. Also, it acts as a collective memory of the society. I will be displaying some of the artistic work here and will be able to tell even the past story of the community, the current and even the desired future. It fosters creativity, it's also a tool for expression. And in this case, it allows viewers to process their emotions and understand their surrounding. I can just see from this one of this artistic work, we are in a position to process how we are feeling from what is displayed on this art. It promotes interaction with the public spaces. Yes, that is a fact, because most of this art are done in public spaces. It engages the youth and we know how much the youth plays a critical role when it comes to conflicts, when it comes to violence. These are the people who can be easily manipulated in the community. But when we are able to engage these youths to speak something about peace, let's just scroll, look at this. These are youths who are engaged in a work that speaks about peace. Then we are able to change even the narrative of how the society have been able to see the youth in peace building. Lastly, and notes here, it spreads down the stereotypes and barriers of mistrust between the adversarial communities. And this one I want to bring out this art. For instance, this is a drama and dance, a peace call before general elections in Nusinkisha County. This is a county where we have, it's a cosmopolitan county. It's a community that has many tribes living in and stereotypes often comes up during elections. So if we are in a position to engage, we may not be able to identify this is a law, this is a Kalangin, this is a Kikuyu, this is any other tribe. But when we bring all this together, it shows, it showcases the value of an interactive culture in the society. Apart from this, we cannot fail to mention that it's challenging, it challenges. So let's me just represent it here, it's a hanging line art that we use in our basic training. And it allows people who are a part of this training to process their feelings, their emotions on how their community looks like. This is an example of an art that is speaking to end teenage pregnancies in Mount Elkon, a community that has had a lot of teenage pregnancies and gender-based violence.
Monica, thank you so much. Any last comments? Sorry, I'm just a bit conscious of time. Anything, any last things you'd like to say? I think you've covered it.
Yes, yes. As a last thing, I want to speak about the challenges that are, yes, it's very important. However, that big important, still we have little support for art initiatives in the country. And yet it has proved itself as an important means to achieve peace and social change. Also, this is a field that requires training. It has been mentioned during the earlier presentations. And we want to challenge and even make an appeal that if we could be having organisations that can support our groups on training on arts, we will actually appreciate. Also, it's important to know that we need to carry out a much awareness in the general public so that they are able to appreciate and even value art education and even art campaigning. So you can be able to reach and even read our stories on our website on how we have been able to carry out some of this work. Our website is here presented, www.afrinov.org. That is where we can, you can read about our stories. You can also connect with us on Facebook and read about the progress of our stories in Kenya. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Monica, for setting out so many of the approaches that Afrinov is taking to programming, very fascinating and interesting to see. I'm going to jump straight in, I'm afraid, to ask Fran now to speak for Kulturans. So Monica, if you could kindly stop sharing, thank you so much. And just for the purposes of time, Fran, please, if you could just jump straight in, you'd like to share your screen as well, I think.
Yes, I will. Can you see?
Looking good, we can see it.
Yes, and sorry, does it move? Yeah, great. So hello everyone, I will do my best to be as quickly as possible. Very happy to be here, thank you Bruce and OICD team for the invitation and to the amazing presentations before, I have been learning a lot and it has already been a fantastic and very early week day for me. So I will share what we do at Kulturans, hopefully proposing some juicy elements for the later discussion. Kulturans is a Mexico City-based NGO, we work internationally. Our approach takes arts and culture as powerful tools to cultivate community wellbeing as a way to explore and find solutions to problems. that cannot only be tackled by science and technology, but rather relate to the core of human experience and creative identity. We usually concentrate on cities, linking art and culture with urban planning and community engagement. So what this means is that we co-create with communities to make cities more human or diverse, meaningful and even passionate by transforming what may seem ordinary or places filled with issues into healthy places that express the imagination of people. And by showing that cities, communities and identities themselves are evolving, adaptive and co-creative processes. So this brings us to how we integrate identity into our practice. And I will share three core ideas guiding our approach and some examples that illustrate them. And I will conclude by sharing where our learning is taking us. The first idea is that of creative citizens and creative citizenship. And this citizenship is not an ID card, but a way of life, a co-created agency within the co-productive systems of the city. And our methodology relies on this creative agency as a core human experience, but also as an asset and as a tool for beating cities, sorry, bottom up. And at the heart of this agency are questions related to people's self-image. How do they define others and their own world and how they imagine new possibilities? So let me give you the first example. Prior to the pandemic, we worked in peripheral Mexico City. And we began in a super dense and deprived eastern edge of the city, where countless slums begin, rife with violence and organized crime. There was this health science university, which was fenced and isolated from its unsafe neighborhood, almost like a jail. And we proposed a crazy idea of turning that university into a healthy city hub, able to export and promote urban health protocols into the neighborhood. And we achieved this through the creative citizens process with people without any creative backgrounds. So we brought together health science students and professors, including medics, psychologists and dentists, with parents and teachers from local schools who wanted a better environment for the kids. They were also involved, other young locals and business owners seeking better opportunities. The completed project was not only about urban regeneration and service improvements, but about the emergence of a collective imagination and identity between conflicting parts of the city and from youth formerly isolated from their reality. They created an identity by facing a common problem and working together. They physically manifested a cooperative culture that promotes health and healing and overcomes fear and fences. Later, that peripheral creative citizens method took us, took our exploration elsewhere to a second idea. This is how we can explore the potential of young people and marginalized groups worldwide, transforming urban spaces and urban identities, helping to find solutions and change our interaction with cities. We created a framework, we named our cities, where young people from the north, south, west and east cities in the globe come together to share and discuss their cultures and the issues facing their cities and to explore how identities could drive better urban transformation. Fascinating conversations on similarities and differences led to incubating innovation projects from a program of youth citizenship and governance in Montreal to a citizen science app for public space advocacy in Hanoi to a social enterprise for green urbanism in Mexico. All of those youth-led projects address the question of how to reimagine public spaces after the pandemic with a strong focus on identities that are more participative, visible, cohesive and diverse. So a third and final idea takes a unique perspective on civic identity. It proposes that the past can unfold creative solutions for the future. This approach focuses on preservation and transmission of cultural heritage and place identity through creation. An example of this is our archive projects, which fuse together ancient and vernacular knowledge with contemporary approaches and turns heritage into a co-created discussion that create products that reflect new forms of identity. Here, for instance, the Ostok Experience was taken from an origin myth of the indigenous peoples of central Mexico and transformed it into an immersive experience storytelling space where you can literally feel the mythical story. Another example in the same line draws upon insights from archaeology and oral pre-Hispanic traditions. Together with indigenous and non-indigenous participants, we came across fascinating ideas about the birthplaces of the cosmos, places of enormous creative power. One example involves the myth of the cultural hero Quetzalcoatl, who saved humanity by bringing music to the world. Caracol de Viento tried to embody that ancient tale on a vast public space with a modern city as a background. It was a recyclable pavilion built with pet bottles, bamboo, interactive mechanisms and musical instruments. The pavilion offered guests an opportunity to learn, to play instruments and to be inspired about what their own past could say about contemporary environmental action. This method has huge potential. Folk stories and traditional crafts can create stunning spaces that expand the value of local traditions globally, as is the case with the Oaxaca Black Pottery Pavilion to the left. Or it could help manifest the connection between natural heritage and cultural identity, creating new venues for community and culture, as is the case of the Art Center in the coast of Vigo to the right. This approach is also a driver for bilateral cultural dialogues. I've seen this example between Mexico City and Beijing. This pavilion design came from a conversation between two symbols of the two cultures. And it offered citizens in Beijing augmented windows to a view of Mexico City, which was curated by Mexican citizens. And as a final example, could vernacular technologies and architectures inspire future solutions? Take our TPIsland prototype based on North American First Nations architecture. It could create a new generation of cultural venues equipped to face airborne infectious diseases such as COVID-19. So this all has been an evolving journey. And to conclude, I will share with you what we see as a next step, where our learning is taking us into a deeper and broader use of the power of identity, arts and culture. We have partnered with OICD to develop what we called Impact. It is an identity method for practical arts and culture transformation. Our aim is to provide a tool for social transformation through artistic and evidence-based solutions, a tool that can be applied globally to address contemporary identity-based and cultural challenges. And there are four key value adds to this. One is that it is a comprehensive, step-by-step art and identity program that blends education, research and innovation with a co-creative component that enables dialogues between cultures and is focused on real-life challenges with an evidence-based component for identity and cultural strategies. This is really a tool that is designed to be adaptable and scalable. The first application of this program we call Impact Cities. And it's focused on the future of the cultural heritage in cities worldwide. It is a way to apply the core ideas that I have been sharing today. That is how to promote creative citizen agency, collective and diverse identity transformation and cultural heritage solutions for the future. So this is a kind of a most needed tool for building communities that are inclusive. And we invite you to join us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Fran. And what a fascinating set of initiatives that you've taken us through on your journey there and really wonderful examples. Thank you so much. Very enriching. I'm so sorry, we don't have time for a rigorous discussion. But if Monica and Betty and Anna and Fran, if you could look back over those comments in the chat. Monica, Afrinov are being asked about the tools you use for impact analysis. And Fran, there's a couple of suggestions there that if I could suggest you all respond directly in the chat to those comments. So thank you so much to Afrinov and to Culturen for presenting today. We really hope to continue the conversation. And as Fran has said, let's get involved and learn more about each other's work.